Are you here for Brookhaven or for the comp plan?
Yes.
Good evening, I call the order, the meeting of the mayor and board of trustees of the village of Burr Ridge for Monday, November 24, 2025. Tom, how about leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get a last name?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Skappa?
Here.
Trustee Francis?
Here.
Trustee Pavezza?
Here.
Trustee Snyder?
Here.
Trustee Matal?
Here.
Trustee Smith? Not here. Mayor Grasso?
Present. Trustee Smith gave notice, proper notice, that he was going to be unable to attend tonight's meeting. It takes us to presentations and public hearings, we have no presentations nor public hearings. The consent agenda, an item shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of anyone trustee or anyone present at the meeting. Those items marked with an asterisk are considered to be on the consent agenda. A roll call shall be taken on the approval of the consent agenda and recorded in the minutes as an omnibus vote. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be discussed by the board, opened for public comment, and voted upon during this meeting. Five minutes, approval of regular board meeting of November 10, 2025, B, receive and file plan commission meeting of November 17, 2025, C, receive and file stormwater management committee meeting of November 11, 2025, D, receive and file special comprehensive plan update committee meeting of November 19, 2025, and E, receive and file regular comprehensive plan update committee meeting of November 19, 2025. Item six, ordinances, A, approval of an ordinance authorizing the sale by online auction of personal property owned by the village of Burr Ridge, stage cover tent. Seven, resolutions, we do not have any resolutions tonight, excuse me. Eight, considerations, D, approval of a contract with Axon of Atlanta, Georgia, for TASER upgrades in the amount of $175,206. E, approval to direct staff to prepare ordinances approving a special use amendment and sign variations, Z, 15, 2025, 100 Burr Ridge Parkway, Brookhaven. F, approval of the fiscal year '26 second quarter budget amendments, and G, approval of the vendor list dated November 24, 2025, for the fiscal year of 2026, in the amount of $995,859.35 for all funds, plus $257,384.23 for payroll, ending November 8, 2025, for grand total of $1,000,253,243.58. With that, can I get a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda, five, A through E, six, A, and eight, D, E, F, and G?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by any of the trustees? Any, yes?
Got a question on eight E, please.
Eight E?
So, the plan commission made recommendations to enhance the cart enclosure, requiring glass, aluminum, and other substantial items for that fixture, that is included in this approval?
So, yeah, Jeanne?
I couldn't find that definitively spelled out.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So, the approval is conditioned upon those materials being used for the cart enclosure, and we did receive, although it did not make it into the packet, we did actually receive an updated rendering of Brookhaven showing that updated enclosure.
Okay, so this approval then would include that updated rendering?
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from any other trustees? Any questions from anybody in the audience, any public comment? Please let the record show that Mr. Menos is here from Brookhaven, good evening, John, happy Thanksgiving to you.
Good evening.
Okay, with that, roll call, please. Did I get a motion and second, right?
Yes.
So, roll call, please.
Trustee Skappa?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Here.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Five, zero, the motion passes. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, that takes us to eight A, consideration of village hall development, Evan?
Thank you, Mayor, got a couple items to discuss with you tonight, the first one is responding to the board's request for a more detailed timeline regarding the both sale of current village hall and the development of the new village hall. As a reminder for the public, the new village hall is referred to the property across the street, 7700 County Line Road, current village hall is this fine building. I'm going to start with the sale, the PSA is expected to be signed and the buyer and the vendor. The PSA is expected to be signed and the buyer and the petitioner will be scheduled to appear at the plan commission this coming January. So, one of the approaches we're taking between council and I with our buying partners is to get as much of the due diligence done up front rather than at the end, and get this all hammered out now. We want to be aware of any issues which may hold up a closing at the end now rather than later. So, we're taking extra time to prepare all the documents necessary now and then bring the PSA forward. So, if you're wondering why it's taking us so long to, to do that, that's the approach that we're taking. Again, we'd rather hear about any issues that may hang up a sale now rather than later. I do want to also note before I go too much further, this is what I'll call the conservative timeline. This is a timeline that staff feels like we can adhere to in any circumstance. It allows for all the necessary time to be put in there, and we don't have to get lucky for this timeline to occur. If there's an opportunity to move things along more quickly than we thought, we certainly will. We're not saying we're going to wait around until January if we don't have to. We're just saying that in a conservative world, we wanted to give the board a time that we know we could give you, that you could rely on and reference in the future rather than saying this is a hope and a prayer and things have to go extra right for us to hit these milestones. I just want to make that known. Again, the, the plan commission will begin to hear the Goddard petition in January. I expect to bring the board some updates in the PSA in December, and then you'll be able to bless more of that before they go to the plan commission. March of '26, the board is expected to receive the recommendations from the plan commission regarding, plan commission, not the commissioner, regarding the buyer's petition. April, you'll make your final decision regarding the buyer's petition, and then in May of '26, the board has directed staff to schedule a public hearing and consider final sale authorization of the current village hall. We expect this to be the last step in the sale process and mark the village's departure from the building. That would be our last board meeting in this building. So, once you approve all that, or if you approve all that, that would be it, it would vacate soon after and be done. Trustee Matal had mentioned the idea of having a public hearing at the beginning of this process as well, when the PSA was first received in January. We'd be happy to comply with that request. If the board's so direct, I don't hear any initial opposition to that idea, but her point was really as much public notice as possible remains a priority of the boards and abstaining speaking heads. So, again, May of 2026 is when we expect, should all this be approved, and again, I want to note just for the record, none of this has been approved, this is all assuming things happen, but again, the board has the right to stop things, prolong things, whatever you say goes. But this is under a normal plan commission process discussion, this is what it would look like, including the process with the public hearing at the end. Form of the development, questions on the sale process?
Anybody, no, anybody have a question at this point? So, two things, one, this is conservative, we're hoping that it goes faster than this, you know, can always hope, and two, I, I agree, we should have a public hearing, as many meetings as possible.
Yes, yes, so that everyone-
We've never said, you know, we've encouraged the public to show up at every, that's why it's been on the agenda every board meeting, and so far, so, we haven't gotten much, I haven't gotten any calls about it frankly, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't have as many public meetings as we possibly can, okay? Understood.
Moving to development, again, development is the, the catch-all term for the construction across the street. December 8th of this year, the staff and LEAGAT will present a final draft of the village halls and interior, exterior architectural elements. This is where we want to nail down the design elements of the property, because this also has to go to the plan commission from January to May, because it's in the T1 district, and all site plans have to be approved in the T1 district, even our own developments. So, we'll be petitioning ourselves to work out how we're actually going to do that, but we'll figure it out. We did it with the police department, I'm sure we could figure out a cordial way to do that. But December 8th will be a big meeting, we're really holding the meeting to have those discussions with you. The mayor, myself, and the architect already met offline once to review some initial plans. I think we're going in the right direction, but we'll meet again before the December 8th meeting, and then at the 8th, we'll present what we hope is the final mock-up that we can take to the plan commission. Design should conclude at that point, again, there's phase one and phase two, you guys approve funding for phase one, should you approve the mock-up of phase one, we'll also have the contract to approve the phase two, which is construction at that meeting. At that point, we'll be into construction, and construction really is the fancy way of saying, signing permit documents, doing the engineering, doing the hard technical things that are not as design-oriented as the design phase is. So, in March 2026, we expect the construction elements of the village hall design to be completed, in line with the plan commission's approval, or we hope approval at that point. April of '26, construction elements will be converted into building permits and bid documents, bids being released to the construction community for review, and then May of '26, you'll have a bid opening and an award will occur. You will be required to award a bid to a responsive construction company, much like we do for the road program, water main bids, things like that. Had a question, Trustee Matal had asked, how does the bid process actually work? Really what they're doing is they're going to be bidding on quantities and labor projections. They're not going to deconstruct the architectural items, we'll have all those things tabled out, so that they know if it's 500 linear feet of that, so many square feet of this, they know that's what the line item will have to be at the end of the day. So, that's why that can occur in about a four to five week period. Again, May of '26, bid opening and award will occur, June of '26, construction will commence in the new village hall, and then May of '27, construction will conclude and a grand opening will occur. Just because we haven't worked out the final design of the building, we can't give you an extremely specific construction schedule, but you'll get a better idea of that on December 8th. We're saying a year just because that's the conservative timeline. If it could be nine months, eight months, great, we're not going to stand in the way of construction going faster and being done on time. But we are asking you to commit to a June construction commencement and a May of '27 completion, just conservatively speaking. Questions on development?
My, my, and this is something that I'd asked Evan, I, my concern was, would one month be enough to receive bids from the different vendors? And that's when he clarified that we're really, you know, getting bids on quantities of items which the architect will already have deconstructed and determined, so that was helpful.
And as Evan said, we did have more, I did have more meetings with the architect with Evan, and took a little mayor prerogative and told him that I think the board would like to see as part of the next presentation, a focus on the building, as this building started conceptually, that is to say, this started out in 1985 as a village hall that had a police department. And taking off on what trustee Francise said at the last meeting, we should make sure it doesn't look like we just added on to the police station, but in fact brought the police station to the extent that it's, you know, not current, and it's 15 years old. And so, I have asked the architect to make that building a village hall that happens to also have the police department in it, not an addition to the police department. That, that shall be, I believe, the village hall, not an addition. So-
Sure enough. And state of the art.
Right, and so, understanding that money is always a factor, at this point, I did say to the architect, plan this as it's going to be the new village hall with a police department in it. Make the entrance a police department, I mean, excuse me, the village hall, and then over there's the police department, just like this one was. And so, that's the, kind of the marching orders I gave to him at this next, only because I, I think that's what the board would probably want to see, I think that's what the public would want to see too, so. So, we are staying in touch with the architect and we will be bringing you updates. Okay, anything more on that?
Not on that specific schedule.
Okay.
Okay, moving down, we've got two or three more logistical items. Because there'll be about a year gap between this current facility being used and that facility opening, we'll have to find someplace to work and have meetings. We've created a working contingency plan and continue service delivery during this time. In summary, we're going to use the police department window, and I know you've all been in there, they've got that great big picture window. Only two employees are using that entire space at this time, so we've talked to the chief, there's some space for some additional employees who really are front window employees who are going to work over there. The balance will work out of public works and the public works half of the building on a in-and-out basis with remote work. Some of our employees really don't come into village hall at all at this point, like finance, and they'll continue to work pretty much remotely exclusively to help save space, but that's a plan that we're working out the details on, but I feel very confident in broad terms, we'll be able to work out just fine for the year. And again, because of proposed layout for the new village hall relocates the police training room and won't exist for that year, we've worked with Pleasantale School District 107 to arrange, and they've generously agreed to make their primary public space available for us from a plan and a board meeting perspective during that timeframe. We strategically were looking for a space that already had video capabilities, some of the other public spaces in town did not have that. We wanted to make sure we, while we weren't in this building, still kept the remote option to participate in that going, and so they were one of the candidates that had that, and their schedule also worked out to have us go into that space without bumping any of their meetings, they meet on Wednesdays once a month. So, at this point, that is the current meeting plan during this time, again, we've got about six months until we actually have to do that, but that's when public meetings of those sites will occur. Some of the smaller meetings, like we just had street and pathway in a conference room, we can do that out of public works. If we had a huge meeting, we would need to probably go to the Marriott anyway, so neither space would accommodate that sort of stuff, but we can probably get along with some of the smaller meetings, stormwater, you can see, I can call the works department for a short period of time, but then, once this is done, we'll have the great, grand boardroom to operate out of permanently. And then finally, just as we're, we're coming into really kind of landing approach here, we're requesting that the board authorize a temporary village hall schedule in which every Friday becomes an in-service day. In-service day is basically, we work, but the doors are closed and the phones don't get answered, and that's because we still have a lot of work to do to actually get out of the building in terms of getting the documents ready, making sure we're actually ready to leave when we close in May. But unless we have some time to really dedicate ourselves in a finite period, we really can't get it done. Fridays are the least patronized day of the week for the village hall, winter is the least patronized time of the year for village hall, it happens to work out well, but that would give staff one day a week to really come in and focus and make sure that with time to spare, we'll be able to leave that last week without any discussion or, or concern. Staff's done a really great job, Jeanine's staff has done a great job, finance has done a great job digitizing stuff to date, Shirley, our deputy village clerk. So, we've made a lot of progress on this, we're not starting today, but that's something I'm really requesting at this point, just because I want to make sure we stick on schedule and we don't have any loose ends when we leave here and there's no hurry. Of course, all that would be publicized, we'll certainly be redoing the website to reflect where people are working with their, if there are changes in phone numbers, we don't anticipate that being necessary, but change in office location will be, but we'll certainly have a very clear, you know, interim staffing plan available to the public on the website during that period. But again, I would request that the board strongly consider and grant that request about Fridays being in service for the next six months or so.
When Evan brought this up, I thought it was a good idea, it's forward-thinking, it's the right time of year, Fridays are, is the least public traffic. As long as we give out enough notice, as much notice as possible, and in many different forms as possible, you know, put it out there, make sure all the HOAs know it, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's a good use of time and really ends up serving the village in the long run because it's, it's proper planning for transitional move to another building, and the whole idea is to make this as seamless as possible, and that will help, that will help in that regard. So, I would recommend also that the board authorize the temporary village hall schedule in which every Friday becomes an in-service day. Okay?
Do we have to vote on that?
I don't think so, what's my consensus, anybody object?
No, I think another thing to do is, on the bottom of your emails, say, just note it, another form of communication.
Yep.
Okay, we'll just go ahead with that and understanding that there's consensus.
I just wanted to piggyback on that, I think through the whole process, I think we need to keep the residents informed, and, and I can also kind of announce that at the end of the meeting that Fridays will be in-service days, but also, I thought if we had an FAQ page, like while the villages, once it gets approved, frequently ask questions, or these are the schedules, the water department can be reached at this location from this time to this time, the more information we put out there, the less nasty letters or complaints we will get.
I totally agree.
So, it's proactive, just prepare for that.
Will do.
Okay, good. All right, I think, yes?
I appreciate the effort that staff put into putting this timeline together, really paints, paints a crystal clear picture as to how this is all going to work, so many moving parts, and there's a bit of a disruption to staff, to the residents, and so forth, but with this plan in place, this timeline in place, we can certainly minimize any pain that might be experienced by anybody, so thank you for doing that.
Right, of course. And, and we, we hope to, you know, under-promise and over-deliver on the schedule, but when you put dates down, it's important to be pretty sure you can comply with them, and if you can do it faster, then everybody's happier, and so I think the plan's a good one, and I think we also have an opportunity to do it quicker.
Yeah.
Okay? All right.
Thank you.
That takes us to A B, consideration of a street and pathway committee recommendation to adopt the 2026 road program. David and Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, we're going to tag team with our new assistant village engineer, Tom Farinak, which gives me the opportunity to introduce him to all of you. Tom came to us back in May, it was, it was, as you know, with the budget, it was an upgrade of a different position. He's, he's got 12 years of experience from the utility side, which gave him some ancillary experience with municipalities, which has translated really well to his experiences here. He comes with a professional engineering license, not only in Illinois, but three other states in addition, you know, the overachiever, but, but that was because of his consulting services on the utility side, which has given him a lot of experience, again, dealing with those, and as well as a project management professional certification, he's just really hit the ground running in Burr Ridge, so it's a good segue into, he was really the closer in our 2025 CIP, so I'll let him introduce that program now.
So, I have a question first, Tom, which three states?
Illinois, Iowa, Texas, and Missouri, so.
Good.
Little all over the place, but thank you, Dave, for the introduction, thank you, Mayor and trustees. So, I'll be covering the summary of the 2025 CIP for streets and pathways, so starting with the 2025 road program. The streets that were resurfaced this last year were Forest Hill Road, Woodgate Drive, the Enclave subdivision, Drew Avenue, and Norris Drive. Forest Hill Road was an inherited township road that was last rehabbed in 2009, as far as the rest of the streets, they were all rehabbed between 2003 and 2004, and all of the streets identified had a pavement condition rating, or PCR, in the 60s, and that really made them good candidates for, for resurfacing. Overall, the final program cost was just over $602,000, so about 3K over budget, and that slight overage was driven by material testing services. As far as the pavement marking contract and cracked ceiling, those both came in under budget. Moving to the 79th Street pedestrian project, so this project's funded in part by a $138,000 Invest in Cook grant. The completed work to date includes sidewalk construction, restoration, and landscaping. And then remaining work slated for spring of 2026 includes installing a pedestrian crossing beacon, you'll see one similar, if you drive up on County Line Road near 60th Street, the intention is to, to put something like that in at 79th, and then we need to adjust the sidewalks for ADA compliance at the crossing. All in all, we're projecting to finish this project roughly $113,000 under budget. And then finally, the Lincolnshire Drive pedestrian crossing project, this one's funded in part through the business district. Construction's planned for spring of 2026 with design engineering and construction engineering all being done in-house. So, the project remains on budget, and we're projecting to be, to be under budget on this one at $250,000. So, all in, the village is on track to complete roughly $1.48 million in streets and pathway improvements for 2025, and we're currently projecting to be $110,000 under budget overall. So, with that, I will turn it over to Dave.
Thank you, Tom.
So, 2025 is our year for our biannual street condition survey, every other year we hit these streets, we look at all village roadways, rate them on a, at 14 different distresses, those distresses, while seen on the surface, are more indicative of what's happening under, or how fast that pavement's going to fail. We want, as you mentioned before, the pavement condition rating, these, the, the purpose of this is to-
condition rating. These, the, the purpose of this is to develop that pavement condition rating. It's a tool, then, that we use to rank all the streets for the resurfacing program, other pavement maintenance, like crack sealing and patching, as you mentioned before. So it's just trying to hit that right treatment on the right street at the right time to extend its life, as you'll see in the next slide. In the, oh, sorry, these are examples of pavement condition ratings. Elm Street is a good example. This was a street that we've been putting off for a number of years. It's got a 64 PCR pavement condition rating. We know this has been targeted surgically in 60th Street, also in that same neighborhood. Kind of underwent a lot of truck traffic this year with the construction of the Elm Street culvert, as well as the Hinsdale Interconnect north of 60th Street. And then the Turnberry subdivision was last touched in 2008 with kind of a novel pavement maintenance approach at that time, but didn't work out so well because of the underground base failures. So we're seeing that surface now, and it's really one of our lowest, with some big areas of failures. So what the, what we're trying to, again, to do in summary with that biannual street condition and pavement condition rating survey is, is hit the street as it starts to degrade. We want to extend its life. These are expensive roads to maintain. They're, they're our most visible asset as well. So we want to keep our Burr Ridge roads at a top condition. Worst is not always the first one done. Kind of depends a little bit on any other subgrade projects we might have going on, utility replacements, like water main replacements, water main repairs, culvert projects, other pipe projects, drainage improvements. We've got that water hydraulic study that we're going to be talking about with the Water Committee in a couple of weeks. It's, it's identified a lot of water main breaks in certain neighborhoods. So we put those streets off because we're going to do a, a pavement maintenance there. So in short, the 2026 proposed road program, based again on pavement condition ratings, a lot of these streets have been coming up very soon, is that Elm Street and 60th Street corridor. Again, it kind of underwent a lot of construction, so we're hitting that area now. And then the Highland Fields subdivision, or I'm sorry, Turnberry. Turnberry was the other one that we saw in the picture. We look five years out. In fact, there's a five-year program in your packet. The next couple of years look like the Highland Fields and 87th Street. Because of some substantial funding increases that we're going to be talking about with staff, or talking about with the board as we develop the CIP, we can do about another four miles of roads over the next five years. So that allows us to do some bigger neighborhoods and do a more sustainable road program. So we're going to stop there and answer any questions.
Anyone?
Yes. Just a comment to further expand on what Dave mentioned about Elm Street. Elm Street repaving was put, pushed off until the Elm Street culvert project was completed, which was pushed off for several years. So that was certainly on your radar to have that work done, but we didn't want to put in a new street, repave a street and bring it up to new standards, and then have all that heavy construction traffic going up and down it for the Elm Street culvert project. So that Elm Street was deferred. Now, now that the Elm Street project, culvert project's complete, now we can go ahead and complete the work on the road. So just to let the residents know why that was deferred. So thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I, I just have a comment. I think you guys do an incredible job, and no wonder Burr Ridge has the best roads in the area. Thank you for everything you do.
Right. And just to follow up on that, this program, the current version of it started in '07, I believe, and we have been, that's one of the things we're proud of, is the way we keep our streets in good condition, as opposed to maybe some other communities. But, but it is a hallmark of Burr Ridge. So thank you for making the comment. All right. Thank you. Any more, any other questions? Any questions from the public? All right. So I need a motion. Do I, I need a motion? Can I have a motion to adopt the Street and Pathway Committee recommendation of the 2026 Road Program?
Second.
I have a movement, a second. Any more questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Five zero.
Five zero, the motion passes. Excuse me. Okay. HC, consideration to authorize the village administrator to enter into a contract for planning services related to the comprehensive plan update, and CNH subarea plan to house Houzio Levine, Laverne, Levine of Chicago, Illinois, in the not-to-exceed amount of $191,990 with a total spending authority of $200,000. Go ahead, Janine.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you just said, the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee, which includes Chair, Trustee Francis, and myself, met on the 19th of November, interviewed three shortlisted consultants, and made a recommendation for Houzio Levine as the recommended consultant to undertake this. After consultation with Evan about the contract amount, obviously, two days did not allow sufficient time to get you an exact dollar amount. We are requesting the, up to, the spending authority up to $200,000. We anticipate the amount to be right around the $190,000 to $197,000 mark. That includes prioritization of the CNH subarea first. We would expect that to be completed within, we'll say roughly by the end of March. So that would be going and kicking off, should this be approved tonight, in early December.
Any questions or comments? Just a little background. Remember, CNH, they had plans, several different plans, and none were actually submitted to the village. But a lot of time went by, and we just thought that the way that situation transpired, that it would be better to have a village-led comprehensive plan that included subarea review for the CNH property and make that the priority. Hence, we have that committee, which trustee Francis co-chairs with Janine, and that's where, that's why we are where we are, and want to spend the money, because we think in the long run, it's the proper way to help lead this project with CNH, to get the appropriate development there. After all, it's 110 acres of Burr Ridge property. And to put that in perspective, the Village Center was about 22 acres.
Wow, five times.
You know, so you're dealing with a big piece of property. And on top of that, that's the history of our village. That's where this village started, International Harvester. And so we owe it in, in the historical sense also. So thank you for the update. Can I get a motion to authorize the village administrator to enter into a contract for planning services related to the Comprehensive Plan Update and CNH Subarea Plan to Houzio Levine, or Laverne, in an amount not to exceed $200,000?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any, any other comments or questions from the trustees? Any from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Trustee Pavezza?
Five zero, the motion passes. That takes us to item nine, public comment. Is there any public comment? There is no public comment tonight. Okay, reports and communications. Anita?
All right. We just had our last event. That was Deck the Green. I was not able to attend, but I hear from Nabila Hashim, our consultant, and she said that everything looked really nice. The families enjoyed the holiday decor, the character performances and photos with Santa. The children's activities were a great success, and the event was very well-attended. The feedback from the residents was overwhelmingly positive, and everyone loved that they could bring their families to such a special event. And it was a great way to kick off the holiday season in Burr Ridge. With that, the lineup of events for 2025 comes to an end, so stay tuned for 2026. I'd like to wish all the residents and their families a very happy Thanksgiving with their loved ones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anita. Anyone else? Yes, Tony?
So now that we are coming to the end of our year here, I know the staff is working on their budgets, and I had a conversation with Evan and with you, Mayor, and I think it would be a great idea for all of us to get together for a budget session and put together some goals. And it'll help give the department heads a little bit more, better direction on what we are looking for as trustees for the village of Burr Ridge financially. So this is something that Evan would moderate. We wouldn't have to bring somebody in to help us with this, and, and we can do it during a regular board meeting.
Okay. Could I propose a date? January, maybe?
I'm honestly thinking next meeting at the board level, December 8. By the time we get to mid-January, the budget's taking shape pretty thoroughly. By then, we'll probably be too late. But honestly, I think we're thinking 15, 20 minutes, from what I understand. So not a, not a two-hour evening like we've done in the past, as trustee says, part of a regular meeting. Just bake it into our regular business agenda.
Looks like the agenda, we'll be able to handle it without
Yeah.
it being too long?
I believe so.
Okay. Anybody have a problem? Yeah, sure.
Great.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, I have just a couple of comments. I was at Deck the Green. I helped, the children helped me and Santa light the tree. And it was, the weather was a lot better than it was last year. Whoever was organizing it, all the booths were filled, and there was a very good turnout. So it's getting momentum.
Yes.
And then add on to that, Janet was with me, we walked down into the, into the Village Center, and it's really done up nicely. And
Nice.
So that was an added bonus. People were there, and then they walked into the Village Center. So I thought it was the best one yet. I thought it was great. The kids were lining up for the train. That was a big hit. The guy in the stilts was there, of course. So was Santa and Mrs. Claus. And so it was a really, really, really good event. And then finally, this is Monday before Thanksgiving. Thursday will be Thanksgiving. Hopefully, we'll all be meeting with our families and friends. And if you could just give a brief moment when you do get together on Thursday to give thanks, because we have a lot to be thankful for in this village. While we have our problems to deal with, they're not really problems of the magnitude that many, much of the world is still dealing with, and some on horrific levels. So give a thought about how great life is generally, and how good it is, and why we call Burr Ridge a very special place, because our life here is very special. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn until December 8 at 6:30?
We're going to adjourn into closed session.
Into closed session. Thank you, Michael. Motion to adjourn to December 8 into closed session and then be done.
To discuss collective bargaining matters between the public body and employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of 104, it was just going to five ILCS 120 slash 2C2. We need a motion and a roll call vote.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Skiafa?
Yes.
Who gave the, trustee Pavezza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Five zero.
Five zero. Motion granted. We're in, well, we're adjourned going into closed session.